I understand.
Fuck you assholes.
Craig's on his way. So we're gonna give a couple minutes. That's our activities. It takes time off.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I have to be part of the first four weeks because my doctor said, don't always spend personally first when she's working. Drive out for two days. And they have five, five different. So already had people pull those already, then I passed another one who just pulled out and figured. Organize attack.
To me, I just think that I don't respect. Whatever they say is meaningless to me, you know? Like, it's worth, it's worth the time to say.
December twenty first, twenty twenty three, little slot attached at the commission meeting. Do a roll call. Positizing.
Here.
Doug Rusman.
Here.
Jennifer Peters.
Here.
Chris Nagin.
Here.
Mike Trebels here, Tom Burridge here. All right, Brian Gokas here. Craig.
Craig.
All right, good. We made the pledge of allegiance.
All right, wait.
All right, all right, keep standing for the pledge of allegiance. All right, I did a roll call. I did the roll call. So we do the pledge. So, uh, you want, you want to, should we get to the business, all right?
Yeah, why don't we, what's with the public comment?
Yeah.
What does move the public comment till after the first presentation, in case there's any comments on that, so. You can all just introduce yourselves.
Kate Durso from Patrick Lenson Bubba.
Peter Albadal with fire engineering design. Andrew Peterson with D V D M engineering.
Sumancho with wireless access technologies.
Good.
Great. Good evening, we are here on behalf of Allentown S M S A doing business with Horizon Wireless. We have submitted a conditional use application for a wireless communication facility to be located at forty-two thirty-five Lewis Avenue. It is located in the rural agricultural zoning district, which is the zoning district in which wireless communication facilities are permitted by conditional use under the township zoning ordinance. The proposed facility would consist of a one hundred and twenty-five foot tall monopole, one hundred and thirty feet to the top of the lightning rod. There would be panel type antennas, your standard wireless antennas at the one hundred and twenty-two foot elevation with accessory equipment cabinets and a standby generator on a concrete pad at the monopole base. The equipment would all be surrounded by a fence, which would be seven feet in height, constructed of chain link with a one foot of barbed wire on top for a total fence height of eight feet. The wireless communication facility is an unmanned facility. It requires traffic or generates traffic about sports utility vehicle once every four to six weeks. Parking for that sports utility vehicle is provided on the plans. The ordinance requires commercial communication towers to be set back one and a half times. The tower heights from property lines, existing residential dwellings, residential boundary lines where a tower is not permitted and occupied buildings, the proposed facility meets that setback requirement. We, the facility will be designed in accordance with the industry standards. The structural standards are based on the E I A T I A two-two-two G standards. The portion of the property where the facility is proposed is an existing densely wooded area. The applicant has entered into a lease agreement with the property owner, which is condition of fine getting all necessary approvals from the municipality as well as any outside agencies. In this, in the township, in addition to submitting for conditional use, we also submitted a site plan for site plan review, which is one of the requirements for this type of use. Before coming to this property, the Horizon Wireless representatives were advised that there was a need from a radio frequency standpoint for a facility in this general area. And with that, I'm going to have our radio frequency engineer, Andy, sort of comment a little bit more on that and how we came up on this property and the needs that Horizon had specifically in this area. And if you could just give a little background to Andy first.
Sure, my name's Andrew Peterson, regular frequency design engineer with D V M engineering. I've been involved in the design of these types of facilities now for twenty-five years or so. Undergraduating graduate degrees from Lehigh University in electrical engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth and probably designed a few hundred, few hundred sites over the years, testified hundreds of times before municipal bodies like this. So Horizon currently has a lack of reliable service in vehicle and in building service. Basically, the area that's affected is south of the Lehigh River to the elevated ground there, West Skyline Drive. So all the residences and the other uses in that area are currently being underserved from a Horizon Wireless coverage standpoint, capacity standpoint. The proposed facility will address that. The, uh, the existing structures in the area mainly consist of aligned utility structures that are at the elevated, uh, bridge line, close to Skyline Drive. They're unavailable for our use. P P N L is planning to replace those and the wireless providers don't really utilize utility structures the way they used to, mainly because of the ongoing operational and maintenance issues it causes and the forging in five G technology is no longer compatible with, with the use of those types of structures. We need to access the radios, which are now up with the antennas. The newer technologies have that feature in their, their, their architecture working out with the radios up by the antennas and the connection to the ground is through fiber optic cable, much, much better from a performance standpoint and modern, the modern networks require that, that type of architecture of the facility. So to schedule an outage, it's just not, it's just not a tenable situation to wait three years to be able to replace a radio or upgrade a radio. So we're not really using those anymore. And there's the fact that P P N L is basically saying you can't use these lines anyway. So other than that, there's also a water tank in the area, but it's very, very low. It's in the tree lines. It's not really of any practical use for us. So, you know, that, that's, that's the first alternative is to, is to seek and utilize an existing tall structure. They're not available in this case that we need. So in a case like this, we're, we are required to build a new antenna support platform, in this case a monopole.
And you mentioned about the capacity, can you explain just a little bit about how capacity works as far as both from an emergency call standpoint as well as users of the Verizon network?
Yeah, so a comment that I hear an awful lot at these types of meetings is, you know, my service was great five years ago, it was great two years ago, whatever the case is, it's been a great since. And I think as we are all aware, folks are now using their wireless devices in a lot of different ways, many ways that we never really thought possible even just a few years ago. Folks are also using these networks now to replace their internet service provider, cutting the cord not only on their phone service, but also on their, their fiber optic or coaxial or T S L service that formerly served their home's internet need. And then there's all the other uses of these networks from vehicles that are using the network and air cars for, for business interaction on, on your laptop or, you know, just kids in the backseat watching Netflix as they drive to and from practice or whatever. So there's just been this tremendous demand on these networks in the past several years. And the, the capacity and coverage interplay is really, you know, that, that, we need both of those to, to enable service. So as there's a greater capacity demand, the coverage footprint will actually shrink from a site during, during busy times as, as the noise floor increases. It's, it's the signal quality that really dictates your service. So as there's more users, there's more noise on the network, that signal quality decreases, coverage footprint shrinks. So that's why we're hearing a lot of, you know, the last couple of years, last few years, my services have gotten poor. So this isn't going away anytime soon. In fact, the trending is still very much in the direction of greater use in the future. Verizon, along with the other wireless providers, they're constantly purchasing more airways through auction from the S C C and, and pursuing other methods of improving their ability to serve their subscribers. But in, in most cases where we have chronic issues of, of coverage and, and capacity, we, we need to build new facilities to address it and that's, that's what we have here. And, and as was mentioned, this, this affects emergency services just the same way it affects casual calls, you know, to see if there's milk in the fridge. So with, with about eighty percent of nine-one-one calls now coming from mobile devices and folks now that, that have the ability through, through E nine-one-one enhanced nine-one-one service to be located in case of emergency without even being able to speak, let's say they fall down steps in their home and, you know, can't speak or they're, they're witnessing accident in unfamiliar area. Being able to make that nine-one-one call is, is of course important and, and having a reliable signal to do so is, is obviously important.
And can you also just touch on the height that's proposed and how the height is sort of determined?
Yeah, so we don't want to overbuild a facility. It does us no good to build a site that's too tall and, and that has redundant coverage. It actually worsens that noise floor situation that I mentioned. But we don't have, we don't want to have a, a site that's too short either and then have to come back and ask for more height. So we, what we do, we look at facilities, once a location is identified, at a variety of heights to see what we need, basically, what, what is the minimum height that serves our purpose? And that's what we determine in this case to be a hundred and twenty-five foot antenna center line. Actually, I think it's one hundred and twenty-two. I think the top of the antennas are one twenty-five for.
Yeah, one hundred and twenty-two.
Yeah, one hundred and twenty-two to the center line of the antennas. And that will serve the need here without providing overly redundant coverage and also while still providing the, the service area improvement that we need.
And then Pete, could you just kind of a little bit just, are the improvements that are proposed, standard type improvements that you see throughout Pennsylvania, Lehigh Valley and even nationally?
Yes, these are standard type improvements. They go with every typical self-power installation.
And from a structural standpoint, they're overdesigned to ensure, you know, the structural stability and so.
That's correct.
Great. We can go on as long as you ever have any answer questions that you might have here ordinance. Requirements are very robust. They require a number of exhibits that we're going to be submitting at conditional use hearing. They include an E M F report, interference report, F A A confirmation, P A evaluation, which we all have in real detail with any of those, we'll just kind of take direction from the plan. I know some of you have been, heard some of these wireless presentations before, so whatever you want to ask.
So you have the December fourteen letter from your number?
Yes, I do.
Have any of those issues, any of those comments that you're not able to comply with? Anything you want to discuss?
No, nothing specific that we need to, to discuss. Some of them are adding some things to the plan. Some of them are items that happen after a site were to be approved, you know, we'll submit the cost estimate for their office to review. And then if the site were to be granted conditional use, which will require them to submit security or whatever amount is, is confirmed. There's ultimately a requirement for a geotechnical investigation. We have to submit a soils report to the township engineer for them to review and to confirm. That's typically done once the site is approved and they're done at the exact location and that will determine how deep the foundation has to be. But we did not have any issues with any requests. A lot of it is stuff that we either will present at the initial use hearing or will submit, you know, revise site plans and then the necessary reports following, but we didn't, we didn't have any issues.
One of the comments I had, Kate, was that you need to identify the total amount of impervious cover that's proposed and that needs to include paving the driveline.
Yes.
So you will need to do a stormwater.
Yes.
I can tell just from the.
Yes. Pete, Pete agreed, yes, we understand, yes, yes, yes. And like I said, some of it is site plan related and we will work with, have our engineers. But again, if the site is approved, there's some things that have to happen afterwards as well.
Right. Will this trigger a land development application or is this just done through a voting permitted process?
It's done, under your ordinance, it's not the land development, but it's the site plan, which is somewhat similar to your land development, not as detailed as the land development, but there are very strict requirements, a lot of the line, send him his letter. And then we will have a stormwater aspect of it because of the amount.
So, so the plan commission won't see this again?
No. They have, this is the site plan. This is the review of the site plan. Plan commission has any questions as well as the conditional leave.
What is, what's the closest home to, to the installation?
Closest to property first, so.
Closest structure is. It's over one hundred and ninety-five feet plus that's tower to the.
Is it the, is the homes again?
Yeah, the closest is.
This is the property owner's, property owner's home, which means that will go.
Correct. And because we have to be at one and a half times from all property, so we're that as well, it is the closest structure, but it is more than the one and a half times.
How often do they fall in?
Very rarely. They are designed to stretch codes and ensure that they do not fall down.
They don't fall over, right? They fall in?
Correct. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Explain that to Rosens.
So typically the, the towers are overdesigned at the base, base is typically the weakest point. That's the most concerned where it's going to do the most damage, but they're usually, they are usually designed so that they either crumple or bend before they completely fall over, just because of the way the codes work. With it being steel, steel tends to fatigue rather than just early break. So you'll see it physically, physically deflect before it actually falls apart.
And, and usually relieving itself of the weight, which is at the top. But so I think when you were just, a lot of people will say it's like a straw bending.
Right. Yeah. A straw, it's bent like this.
Yes, alleviated.
Instead of like this.
Correct, correct.
And it rarely happens.
They're designed to withstand, you know, the, each geographic area has sustained wind that it needs to withstand and then it also has to withstand a certain amount of ice from the antenna and that's geographically based. And then the foundation itself is site specific to the soils based on what the soils determine the altitude, so how far in the ground it has to go. So one is site specific and then the other is a geographic requirement. But they also have these towers in hurricane areas and, you know, in other areas where the natural disasters affect. Many times the wireless facility is the only thing left with being able to provide services when you might have other utility poles and whatnot that are not working, not operating. This is why the site also has a generator. All the sites now, the Verizon does have a generator to ensure that there's going to be some, you know, ability to make those calls in the event of, you know, whether it's a hurricane or tornado or whatnot.
I have heard from our volunteer fire services at the service up there, if you spot it.
The generator of the truck.
It's diesel, it's a diesel generator.
Is there any storage?
There is a containment tank underneath the, the generator. It's a double wall containment. It holds.
Is it underground or above?
Above.
Yep.
It's a two hundred and three gallons.
Two hundred and three.
Yes.
That probably runs weekly for fifteen minutes at a time?
Maybe like once a month for maintenance and then during any emergency outbreak, obviously powers.
How many hours of service does that, the generator that has to run full while it's running? Does the generator have to run full capacity while it's running?
Once, once.
It's not running based off the demand, it's running?
No, it's running based on the demand.
Yeah. So how many hours do you get out of it?
I've heard up to a week. I've heard, I've heard less, certainly enough time to get, under most circumstances, to get a refuel if, if required.
Typically, a quick question for you, you said the minimum height is that you needed was under twenty-two feet or under thirty? What's the typical height?
So it used to be that we would build sites in excess of two hundred feet and put them on the, the highest local maximum as far as ground elevation goes and, and, you know, try to get as much area out of, of coverage from them as we could. And back in the nineties, everyone that had a phone had a, a bag phone or a car kit that was three watts and could, could talk back miles to these, you know, these really tall towers. But as the, the networks have matured, the tower heights have come down significantly. So now we're, we're usually building sites between one hundred and twenty and one hundred fifty, sometimes one hundred and eighty. That's kind of on the, on the high side of what the, the sites that I'm involved in anymore. So I'd say that this is kind of on the medium to low height range.
Is this the G five, five G, something? Five G making some of these towers lower or does that have nothing to do with it?
Not, not in and of itself. Um, not, not in and of itself. I mean, this, this tower will, is planned to have 5G equipment on it, but will also have four, you know, 4G equipment. 4G is not going away anytime soon. 5G is, is just the next iteration and improvement in basically spectral efficiency of how many ones and zeros you can transmit and receive.
And it won't affect the height?
No, it doesn't.
Or the mean of the height?
No, I mean, it's still, we need that height to, to kind of see over the, the surrounding environmental manmade clutter. We still need that line of sight. The, the energy that, that in the vans that Verizon's licensed in, it's, it will penetrate stick-built structures, licensed steel structures, but anything between the, you know, the antennas, just like any other radio signal will degrade the signal. So we want to have it elevated enough where we have a decent line of sight of the surrounding area and then, you know, when we have to get through manmade material, we get through, you know, what we need to, but that's the same for 5G as, as 4G. The, the technology is really, you know, the radio link is the radio link back to, going back to, you know, Marconi and, and AM radio. It's really what happens at the ends and how we're able to modulate, to modulate the signal where the, the technology iterations come into play. So it's the same, you know, it's, it's, it's a bigger, it's a wider channel, it's a spectrally fatter channel, more, more bandwidth, but it's, it's the same, you know, it's, it's the same carrier. It's sort of electromagnetic and... It will be opportunities for other carriers to co-locate on this structure?
Yes.
So it will make the need for more towers?
Correct.
Yes, the ordinance also requires us to design it for whole section.
So is this the lattice structure? Now, okay, just the one, the one graphic in the, in that packet, it looks like it's the lattice structure.
Originally it was going to be the lattice and then changed to the model for, for its online.
Yeah, sure. More questions?
If, if other carriers are co-locating on the same tower, the maintenance and inspection is still gonna stay... So there's gonna be inspection on this tower or...
So, so according to the TI code, there, anytime that a tower is touched and operated, it is required to be inspected and maintained and, you know, they're supposed to address, they are to address the deficiencies that are under inspection. And that's a responsibility of the carriers to do that, each carrier.
In this instance, who, who's it gonna be?
For this, for the original install will be Verizon. So anytime Verizon does a, a maintenance or a change, they are required to visually to inspect the tower and ensure that it's...
Okay. And who, who's the tower owner?
Verizon Wireless.
Verizon is the owner of the tower?
Yes, yes. And they have like reciprocal agreements with the other carriers.
Sure, okay. Yeah, I mean, there, there are instances where there are private entities that own the towers and they lease this space out.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes, like right now it's closely Verizon Wireless. Sometimes in the future you might have a carrier who decides that they sell a couple of their assets and then it becomes more like what you might hear FDA, you know, is a company that doesn't have a FCC license but owns the towers and then, you know, they own and maintain it and then they have multiple carrier response. So, yeah. And American Tower is another one that works like SBA.
Could have been up to, bring me up, do you have a surprise?
I just have one curiosity question. Your, your proposed driveway paving is six inches thick, which is like a road. Is there a reason you're making it so thick that would, is that for any kind of maintenance trucks that go up there? That's just a curiosity question.
No, but it doesn't have to be that thick. I don't think we need it to be that thick. What, if you, would you be able to tell us what it, what it can be or what do we get to all offline?
Yeah, well, we should check the ordinance, but I don't think that's an order.
Okay, okay.
All right, the first name on the list is Russ Sutton. Russ Sutton?
My name is Russ Sutton. I live at 2133 Sawken Avenue. I'm about 700 feet away from this proposed tower. I have a statement to read and I also have questions I'd like to ask if possible, Verizon. Is that permitted?
Well, yeah, I mean, sure, you can ask the questions and, and, you know, can you still use, can you still use hearing was probably the more appropriate list?
Okay, but just, just in general.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
My, my wife and I are deadly against this particular tower. It completely changes the nature of our community. We've been living up there for 35 years. I built our house myself and the reason I moved up there is because of the beautifulness of the woods and the fauna and everything is there. And it has me really concerned. And this is along, the question I have to ask, did Verizon buy this property? Do they have a deed of property or is this part of the Vasidas property?
It is part of the Vasidas property. They, we are under a lease agreement.
A lease agreement?
Earlier.
So they're allowing you to lease this?
The lease is contingent on getting the approvals, but yes.
Okay, 'cause he spoke to me approximately 10 years ago about putting a cell tower up there and basically is for the generation of income for himself between four and $6,000, between $6,000 and $10,000 a month for the use of this tower. None of the residents benefit from this in any way. I don't understand why the tower is in a slope of a mountain when if you look at radar, radio towers in the vicinity, they're all on top of mountains to get the most broad wavelength and the biggest generation. So I don't understand why we locate this on a slope. I also like to know, how much wind can this tower take? Because when Sandy came through, we had 70 mile an hour straight winds that destroyed houses and trees. How, how much wind can this tower withstand?
So I don't know what it is on top of it, it's a sustained wind requirement based on the geographic area. Northern County is just the one, I don't know what it is. It's not based on gusts, it's based on sustained winds. I don't have that information, but they're required to be designed in accordance with those standards.
Right. So I, I, you know, if you could be prepared to answer something like that, whatever.
And, and you also mentioned it was heavily wooded. It is not heavily wooded anymore because for the last three months, there's been a logging company up there doing supposedly selective logging, which is not true because they flattened the place and they've taken all the trees out and they, but they're still working up there right now. And there's only two accesses to that particular tower. One on Matthew, which is a paper street, and the other one on Lewis, which is a paper street. They're not public streets, they're paper roads. Because I know, because I own the other half of Lewis Avenue. And as you can see, they ran heavy equipment through the whole thing and destroyed the whole area. They were only supposed to take out the most mature trees and let what else stand. They ripped everything apart, literally, and they're still doing it to this date. And I'm, I'm very upset about it because we're trying to save the forest at the, at the Wasis Volle site. And this is 50 acres on the top of it about, and this was an Indian burial ground at one time on the top. And they basically destroyed the whole area. And then not only that, if you look at the size of this equipment, they're using bulldozers and they use machines that actually grab the trees and rip them out by the roots and they swing them and destroy anything within arc. If that tree's 100 foot tall, it destroys everything with a 100-foot radius. So that is not selective foresting.
This, this is not anything that we're...
Well, no, no, but what I'm saying is the only access you have is these two streets, Matthew and Lewis, and this is what I'm saying. You, you said it was heavily forested, well, it isn't anymore. Another question I have to ask you is about, was the elevation and also this obstructs the view of our mountain and I would like to, I, I don't understand why they're destroying all that up there. And what is it in for us property owners? It devaluates our property. Again, there is no direct public access to this. And also up on that street where the, his roadway goes in, 20 triaxle trucks of etching came out from the road paving service that was done in Steel City. 20 triaxes went up there and it was rolled and there's a parking lot up there. As far as I know, there was no permits for any of that. And there's no permits about any drainage from that that affects us below there. All the water comes down the mountain onto our property.
Right, there's, there's a good point you're bringing up, but those aren't...
I know, it's not right to, I agree. But I'm just saying, in addition, in addition to this, this is all conclusive.
I understood, but if any, any issues like that should be brought to the township's attention and the, the code officer will go out and investigate.
Right, and I, I've already spoken to the zoning officer about that. He did have a desist order, a desist control by the state.
Right, so, so the, these people don't really have any, any control or impact on what's going on there, so...
And I guess, and I guess why my question is, who contacted who? Did Mr. Vasidas contact you to put this tower up or was it the other way around?
It was the other way around.
You contacted him?
The, Ms. Manchell, who is the site acquisition representative, she went around and contacted Mr. Vasidas.
10 years ago?
No.
'Cause he told me about this tower 10 years ago.
I don't know what happened 10 years ago, but this happened now and Mr. Vasidas did not...
Yeah, it's not about what properties are available or who wants a tower on the property, it's about where the need exists and then being able to find a property that, that is willing to host a site, I believe.
Right.
And zone July.
And would it be better if it was higher up to get better coverage?
Actually, no, which is what Mr. Peterson testified about, that back in the day you used to be on the top of the mountain, now you're, now you're not on top of the mountain.
Okay, well, thank you for answering, thank you for answering my question. But again, I'm in objection to the cell tower.
Kathy McAllister? Kathy McAllister? Okay, that'll be after. Okay. WM Warner?
I'm sorry.
Huh? Okay, okay. Priscilla Delium?
Hello. My name's Priscilla Delium and just so you know, I'm on council in Lower Sawken and I'm also a resident. My address is 2140 Sawken Avenue, so I live very close to this cell tower that's proposed. I don't have a map with me, but it's the next property over, I guess. So I would like to say that the photos in the packet don't, in my opinion, I'm not an engineer, don't really match the location on the map. It just seems like it's overt a different way. And in my opinion, there's too many outstanding conditions and I'll just go over some that jumped out at me. We have the applicant shall provide a plan that demonstrates compliance with all natural resource protection standards as defined by this chapter, which exist on the parcel to be developed. Additionally, provide the limits of disturbance on the plan. Well, I don't know what date you guys are gonna go by, but the whole plan, the whole site has changed because of the logging. That was, that happened up there. And the runoff, and I live downhill from him, from Mr. Vasidas, and when he built his house, I don't know, 2004, a lot of the residents were concerned, attended many meetings and insisted on really strict stormwater provision so that we wouldn't get washed out. So he had to do all kinds of stormwater things to his property. And now, we don't know because as Mr. Sutton has testified, there's all kinds of stuff going on up there. So I don't even know if there's any natural resources left, if they were there. So it's really sad because this township is trying to preserve what we have and I don't see that happening behind my house. Another one, the applicant proposes chain link fence with barbed wire, no fence shall contain or have hatched or whatever. There was, and again, this is, and forgive me, I have to ask, this is the conditional use hearing because before it was a variance for the special exception. Am I correct? Yes, or take...
Before, before we were asking for variance, this is just a condition that we do not require any here.
Right, so...
And this isn't the hearing, the hearing is...
No, I understand, we had the hearing on January 17th. Oh, absolutely. So...
But the, but the one you're talking about, the fence, allows the zoning officer to approve it and if he doesn't want the barbed wire, then we construct it without the barbed wire.
Right, my point being a neighbor is that I don't want to look at something unsightly. And our zoning ordinance, I have, I was here when we did the logging ordinance before the state changed it. We spent hours and hours trying to protect properties around for, for this to happen and it got all thrown away. But anyway, so, and, and for the cell towers. When you look at the fencing, you know, the, the last time, this was before the, the township, it said that there were trees around, so we really didn't need to plant screenings around the fence because it was wooded. That's not the case anymore, so that needs to be looked at.
We need to add landscaping.
You need to add landscaping around the fencing?
Yeah, we need to, yeah. We're, I think, I think we will have photographs to show that the base of the structure is not going to be visible by, by probably it's around the property, but it needing, we're certainly wired trees.
Let's see, provide the location and label all existing structures and driveways within 100 feet from the property. It's not even, it's not even located on a, a public street, it's a paper street. Lewis Avenue is a paper street. Runoff, I talked about impervious coverage, including all proposed driveway and parking lot paving should be listed and stormwater facilities proposed. I don't think I saw anything in the application on stormwater and you already know where you're putting stuff and...
So, so I said earlier that we need, that there's a site plan requirement and a conditional use requirement. The site plan requirement comes to stormwater, which your engineer brought up to us and we agree that we would need to apply to stormwater.
Right, that was the additional pay driveway would need to be controlled.
I'm just reiterating the importance of stormwater because I live downhill and I'm tired of having runoff onto my property from that site above me when it was supposed to be addressed when he applied for, for his house. And that never, that's gone yet.
Again, that's a separate, that separation from this application, so...
I'm playing, playing resident here, so I'm just...
I'm sure the engineer will make sure that we need all the stormwater requirements.
Okay, and then again, there's pages and pages of outstanding conditions, which is fairly disappointing to me.
Wait, excuse me?
What's that?
What did you say?
I said I'm disappointed that there's all these outstanding deficiencies.
They're not asked, they're not outstanding deficiencies.
You didn't, you didn't address them.
I explained earlier that a lot of them are requiring exhibits to be presented.
Okay, we'll see.
Conditional use hearing.
Okay, I might not have heard you in the back because it's hard to hear back there, especially when you're not speaking into the microphone.
We can hear you just fine, don't worry.
Yeah, you can, but the residents can't. So Tom, do you want to go around that?
I thought it was picking me up, I apologize.
Okay, that's all I have for now, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Danielle Yan-Chuk?
Oh, come on now, you can do better than that.
I'll do as good as I can do.
Danielle, not Daniel.
Hannah? Well, you want to speak?
Okay, so my name is Danielle Yan-Chuk and I live at 2140 Sawken Ave. For all of your information, I am the closest property aside from the Vasidas to this proposed cell tower location. So I know this isn't the conditional use hearing and some of the things I say might be a little redundant and echo what my neighbors have said, but there's a few concerns that I have that I would at least like the planning commission to chew on. For starters, we know it's a known fact that cell towers emit radio frequency radiation and this kind of radiation is considered environmental pollution. I'm concerned about the health and safety of my two young boys as well as all the other children in my neighborhood. We have many young families that live close to the proposed tower location. How do we know it's safe for them to grow up? How do we know it's safe for them to grow up being exposed to this kind of radiation day in, day in and day out for many years to come?
So if I could comment on that. The Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996 prohibits a municipality from denying a wireless communication facility based on. Well, I'm allowed to respond to your comment, based on alleged health effects. The FCC has determined what levels are permissible. And the EMF report will show that the facility is well below the emissions levels that are committed by the FCC.
I'm going to respond to that also. I'm well aware of the FCC Act of 1996. And we are all living in almost 2024 with nearly 30-year-old data that says this is safe, and that was how many generations of cell service ago. I have a packet of peer-reviewed studies right here that would argue that these are not safe. There are quite a few substantial things that are detrimental to human health and children are the most susceptible to this. I'm a concerned mother, so this does bother me some. Going on, there's the visual impact. This thing is going to be a couple hundred feet away from my house. I don't want to look at it. I moved to Steel City to enjoy the forested retreat just outside of suburbia, just like most of my neighbors did. I know some of you aren't very familiar with Steel City. Those of you that don't live on the mountain, stick with her. I know you're very well familiar with it, because your son played football with my son in the park. You know that a cell tower is not the character of Steel City. It doesn't fit what it's supposed to be. And then there's the, the effect of property values. The U.S. Department of Housing and Development considers cell towers hazards and nuisances. Estimates from studies have shown that close proximity to cell towers can inflict more than 20% drop in, in property values. This is a real problem for me, because I have every intention of moving once that cell tower is approved. When they were looking for houses, I explicitly avoided homes that were near cell towers or power lines. And I know I'm not alone. Most young families looking for homes right now don't want to live there. So if I have to sell my house, it's going to be a huge problem. And then there's echoing my neighbors, there's the disturbance of earth and the impact on the neighboring properties. Over the last handful of years, the property owner has done a lot of earth moving that's caused substantial flooding and damage to my property. And I understand that that isn't particularly what is concerned here. But I have some photos here that I, may I present them to you?
But again, it's really not applicable to what we're talking about today.
Well, it kind of is, because my concern is that this is only going to get worse. I'm below where this tower is going. And they're going to pave a road there. They're going to remove vegetation that filters most of this stormwater runoff. So I have photos here of my flooded yard that, you know, was not an issue before there was earth moving. I've been in my house for over a decade. This is going to cause further problems. So I want to see some substantial evidence of what they're going to do to mitigate this.
Well, they have to control the stormwater runoff from all, all the new impervious that they're creating on this project. And like, doesn't necessarily speak to what's there now, but it speaks to what, what additional they're going to provide.
Right. And then there's the issue that the applicant hasn't fulfilled all of the zoning requirements. Priscilla brought up some of them. There's no, I haven't seen any proof in the application of substantial evidence of drop calls. There's a few households on Riverside Drive, I guess, that are having some issues. But does a few houses necessitate the need for a building of a new tower? I mean, that doesn't sound substantial to me. And then there's the issue of co-location. I loosely noted that there were 29 registered towers within a two-mile radius. And those are only registered towers. From what I understand, towers over 200 feet don't have to be registered. So again, I know you commented on this a little bit, you know, that there isn't another structure high enough for this equipment to go on. But, you know, with so many towers in the area, I mean, I would like to see proof of that and also that other locations haven't been explored. And I just have one, one final comment. The applicant had requested that they should be allowed to utilize, utilize the private access on the Macedos property, which is a private road and not a public street, as a tenant of the property. However, I wanted to remind you guys that the 2004 granting of access to the Macedos property states that the approval does not run to the benefit of any other construction or development on that property. So they are not given rights to use it because of that. So that's all I have.
Bilal Khan.
Thank you, I'm Bilal Khan. I live at 2153 Salkin. I moved here a year ago. I moved to that address a year ago, also after a long period of looking for houses far from power lines and cell towers. So you can imagine, I'm not that excited about the prospect of this. I'm not going to repeat what Russ Sutton and Danielle just said. I'm in full agreement with them. I'd like to be on record opposing this proposal. I'll just focus on things that I think haven't been mentioned. The applicant refers to this as a densely wooded area. And this is a language that's meant to obscure the fact that it's actually near a large number of homes. It's not a densely wooded area and, and, you know, they're placing a cell tower in the middle of a forest. They're placing a cell tower at the edge of a forest next to a large number of homes. So a more forthright description would be the edge of a once densely wooded area that is adjacent to a large number of residences. I think it's very indicative that when asked what was the nearest, closest structure, the applicants were unable to come up with that, had to look, look on in their packets for it. And really, in the end, were only concerned with the fact that they had met the 195-foot minimum distance requirement, because that's the letter of the law. Actually, I hope that you will consider the long list of individuals and their homes that are, that are close to this proposed cell tower. Some of whom you heard today. Finally, I'd like to say that it's not at all clear to me that having some employee of the corporation that is making the proposal stand before you and say, yeah, there are 911 dropouts, and yeah, people can't watch Netflix while they're driving home from school. And therefore, we need a cell tower. I don't think that that constitutes a kind of evidence that, I mean, it's not a verifiable claim. You should be asking for some, some verifiable third-party claim. There was a question that Mr. Hijazi asked, which I'd like to repeat, because I don't think it was answered, and I really appreciate the question. And that was, when other carriers place their equipment on the, on the tower, what happens to the service needs of those carriers? So Verizon has one, one SUV coming in a month. Now let's say it has 10 different carriers who have each subleased out to a bunch of other people. Are they going to count on Verizon to manage their equipment? Certainly not, certainly not. So that one SUV is going to become 10 SUVs, and nobody's going to blink an eye, because the approval will have already happened and it will be elastic enough to allow for that. Same with the tower height. The tower height is touted as 125 feet. Do you know whether it can be made taller once the approval is passed? Actually, I'm pretty sure it can. So this idea that, well, we'll just sort of get the thing passed and then it will balloon, you know, people will watch more and more Netflix. So we'll just keep raising it up. This is, this is a bottomless pit, actually. And, and what does, what does get impacted as a result is the character of the community. There was another question that Mr. Hijazi asked, which was not entirely answered, which had to do with diesel storage. So, you know, the threat of fire, there have been fires before my time, before my moving there, there have been massive fires on that mountain. So are fire trucks going to travel up this paper road that's been paved? Perhaps that's the reason why it's being cemented to six inches, to be able to carry the load of a fire truck. That would be something to consider, the fire risks associated with it. Finally, one of the members of the applicant's team referred to the 90s when we were walking around with bag phones. I thought that was really great, given that, given that the legal statutes that this entire application is based on comes from a time period when we were all walking around with bag phones. That's all I have.
Stacy Mizenski.
Good evening, Stacy Mizenski, 4231 Roberts Avenue. So, okay, section 180-97C3A4. Applicant proposes to chain link fence with barbed wiring. There are not only birds, but also eagles that traverse the proposed area of this tower. Barbed wire fence is not an appropriate material to be placed in environmentally frequent an area with bald eagles. Section 180-102C2B, Lewis Avenue. Why don't we take a look at Lewis Avenue? Lewis Avenue is not an engineered road. Lewis Avenue is not a recognized road of the township of Lower Salkin or in Bethune, Pennsylvania. It is not an engineered road. In actuality, it's not even a road. It's a strip of land covered by asphalt, and I watched that asphalt happen through the years. It's not maintained by the township. It's not only, it's not cleared of ice or snow and inclement weather. The width thickness and thickness of impervious surface and breadth of the driveway, as well as the collector road, being Salkin Avenue, that is the egress for Lewis Avenue, is, Lewis Avenue driveway, is a rural road that can only allow two, that can't allow two cars to pass when residents utilize Salkin Avenue to park their vehicles on the other side. And I know that, because as we all know, when we live there, you have to wait for the other car to pass. So Verizon mentioned that they need help with Skyline Drive. Interesting, because Skyline Drive is actually a perfect location for this cell tower. It's in the vicinity, it's in the vicinity of a landfill. And that landfill has destroyed many residential areas on that Skyline Drive. But Skyline Drive is a recognized township road. It's maintained by the township. It gets cleared of ice and snow. It is paid for the township and is maintained by the township. So if you need to service emergency calls, Skyline Drive would probably be a better location for this tower. I'd also like to know where they are in the approval process, because according to the FCC, regardless of whether an environmental assessment is required for a project grading soil, removal vegetation, clearing of an area, or otherwise beginning construction or building without completion of an FCC's environmental process can constitute a violation of FCC rules and subject the party to potential enforcement action. Granting a license is not an authorization to build unless all environmental review requirements have been met, including review, announces, and completion of an NEPA checklist to determine if a project qualifies for a CAT EX. Filing an EA, receipt of an antenna structure registration number, and conclusion of a 30-day period of public notice period are required in resolution of any requests for environmental review where applicable.
The NEPA report has been completed and will be provided to the township engineer as requested in this letter.
I oppose this land, no, this cell tower.
That's the last name on the list. Is there any body who has not spoken yet that would love to speak? Any other follow-up questions?
I just wanted to emphasize the issue of stormwater management. I mean, you heard what happens here, it's an ongoing issue. So when you do your design and finalize it, just to make sure that this is taken care of.
Yeah, we, we are used to, colleagues especially, is used to doing the proper analysis and that we understand that it has to go through our engineering's office for review and conformate with, you know, the township regulations. And then there is a requirement to make sure that we are not causing stormwater runoff as a result of the wireless communication installation to go offside.
Any photos that you've provided, what was the date that they were taking?
Yeah, they were taken in February 2023.
Long before the tower was moved. It was moved, the tower was moved.
It was relocated.
Right.
Those photos are old.
The tower was relocated.
What happened with the photo, what happened with the.
What are these?
What happened with the photo simulation is, what first happens is that they go out and they take photographs of the surrounding area. And you can do it at whatever time. We tried to do it in the wintertime, when there wasn't going to be as many leaves on the trees, so that it would be, you know, showing what it would be. We've been working on the site for a long time, which is why there's a site photos were taken in February 2023. And then the, how the photo simulation works is that you then superimpose the structure at the location at the height that's proposed. And there was originally photo simulation submitted for the site being located slightly over on the property. And then they were verified at the current location. But that's, that's how it's done.
Previous site would have even, it would have had less disturbance. Is that correct? But basically, the same people showed up.
So, yeah, so the, so the prior site location was further into the site, but we were asking for a variance to not have to pave the road. But we were met with resistance from the residents for the variances that were being requested. So we now are paving the road and moving, having moved the site so that we did not need any step back. We were trying to locate it previously so that there would be less tree disturbance, less ground disturbance, but it also required variance from not having paved the access road. And we also required a step back variance to the one property line. But because we were meeting resistance with the variance request, we amended the application to remove the need for any variances. So yes, this location does result in more impervious coverage than the original location. And that is so that we don't need to have to get any variances.
Because there were some judgments, first variances, which had less disturbance.
Correct, correct.
Get what they asked for.
Now, the comment about the height of the tower, as a follow-up, not the comments, do you ever envision that you may increase the height in the future?
So Verizon, we're very, we're very careful to, as I mentioned earlier, design the antenna height to the height that we need, not too much and not below what we need. And it wouldn't be, and in my experience, I wouldn't anticipate Verizon extending it. Now, it's, potentially, another carrier may come along and they may say, well, Verizon's at 122 feet. We can install our antennas at 112 feet, usually 10-foot separation. And they may, that may be fine with them. Or they may attempt to raise the height, in which case I believe they would have to come back before board for that extension. Depends on the design of the tower, whether, whether it can be extendable. That's out of my, out of my lane.
But as, as the applicant, you don't foresee yourself denouncing the tower?
No, right, no, I've never been in, I don't think I've ever been involved in a site where Carrier A came and built a tower and then five years later extended it because of more use or more, more Netflix that was a little bit too early. And now I've never, never been involved in that.
Your, your antenna height is based on your network, right? So you can't, you can't adjust your antenna height.
It's. The surrounding sites, basically, you know, what, what our surrounding sites are, where they're covering, you know, how this puzzle piece fits in with, with the puzzle that's around it is, is kind of, you know, from, from a lanes terms, how we're kind of figuring out what that height needs to be to address our need.
Right, now, it's my understanding with the Co-location Act that, that it could be extended another 10 feet in height without. without requiring any township approvals. But beyond that, it would, it would have to come back for the township. Unless we maybe assign some type of condition that.
You know, we've seen cell towers here before and, and we've seen cell towers as a conditional use. And if I recall correctly, every single conditional use that was ever granted by the township limited it to a certain height unless they came back. It's a condition.
I also think here, unless you change the setback requirements, if you were to increase the height, you would likely need to get a setback variance.
I would need a variance.
So, so in addition to the, the, getting the approval just for the extension, you probably would need to get a variance relief unless the ordinance were to change to have some other types of modifications for qualification.
One last question, would that tower improve service in the area?
I'm not sure I understand.
Will the tower improve service in the area?
For Verizon customers, absolutely. Yeah, that's the, that's the intention to improve service, add capacity, add coverage for Verizon wireless subscribers.
And from your perspective, that's the only way to improve it? By building that tower?
Yeah, we, I mean, before we propose a new tower, we're always leveraging the existing assets that are already out there. Some of the towers that are surrounding the area to provide service into the area, they're already upgraded with, you know, the latest technology. It's much faster to market, much cheaper to upgrade what we have. It's an expensive endeavor to, to build a new facility. Verizon doesn't, you know, just do it on a whim. They're, they're carefully planned and, and, you know, it's, it's, it's required to, to provide the service.
So were there like feasibility studies in terms of, do I need it, can I, can we go without it? Can we do something else or, or just?
So, so like radio, so the radio frequency engineers at Verizon say, we need a site in this, that will have like a specifically geographic area. And that's based on, you know, customer complaints, you know, drive test data. I mean, I don't want it to be for you. But, but they, the information comes back and they say, we need a site in this general area. So then they go to somebody like Ms. Vanchello in the end and say, we need a site in this general area. So then they first go, well, what existing structures are in that area? You know, we know where Verizon sites are and where they have their equipment. But what else is out there? What's tall? So we'll drive around, is there any tall structures? Is there, is there this, is it available? But it's still, because of the number of people who have wireless phones, you know, it used to be like you'd have bigger spreads of where you would see the tower. But now, because everybody has a, has a sub call, they are closer together and they're off of the mountains like Annie testified to earlier. So she has a limited geographic area. So then if she can't find an existing structure, then she's got to start contacting property owners. Typically, she will look at the zoning ordinance to say, can we go on a property where it's allowed? Let's, let's start with somewhere where the township has indicated a wireless case facility should be located. So in this instance, the zoning district of the RA is where they're allowed. So then she looks for an RA, you know, zone property. And then it's, can we find a property that's large enough that we won't need any variances? You know, and, and as you know, in that area up there, there's not bearing any large properties that you could put it on. So that's sort of what happens for, for the genesis of a site, no matter where it is. Like if you're in the city of Bethlehem, maybe you have the ability for some existing structures that are tall that you could attach your antennas to. But in the more rural areas where the terrain is the way it is, you're, you're more limited.
You mentioned that you're amenable to adding landscaping to help just with the visual impact. Can you go in more detail on that?
So the way the ordinance is worded is that we can propose using existing, if existing mature. And then if not, we would have to put an evergreen screen around. It, it, the requirements of landscaping is just to camouflage the, or screen the fence compound. It's obviously not meant to camouflage or hide the tower itself. So we will have photographs that we'll submit at the conditional use hearing to show how we think the existing vegetation, now we understand what the neighbors sense, we will reevaluate to, to determine what has been removed from the logging that has happened up there. And if there's not adequate existing ground cover, then there's a requirement to do it in support of like an evergreen screen to go around there.
So you go out and take new photos and?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And again, we, we are aware of the logging operations because the property owners told us. But there is quite a bit of tree cover up there. And so again, we try to figure out a way to do it that you're not going to, again, we're only talking about the ground being visible from property owners. The, the tower will clearly, you know, be visible at certain locations. And we think the photo simulation that we submitted shows that this is an area where it's not as visible as if you were in an open field.
But you do have the ability to screen that compound with the, the equipment and the fence and you can screen that.
Yes, yes, and we will verify that, especially given the comments we received.
All right, what, what do we need to make a motion?
Well, the conditional use hearing is scheduled for January 17th, I believe, in front of council. So the planning commission doesn't have a meeting before then. The two items that you're required to review is the site plan. And I, you've seen Brian's letter and, you know, there are some things that he's asked to, to clean up the site plan. I mean, it is what it is. And the, and the other thing is the conditional use application, which is a little weird and I've never really understood why the, the planning commission makes a recommendation on the conditional use application before the actual hearing is held. But that's the way it's written in the zoning document. So those are the two items.
So we make a motion?
You can make a motion to approve the site plan subject to Brian's letter. And then you can make a motion on the conditional use application if you want.
All right, won't make the motion.
Yeah, talk to, deal with the site plan first. I would, I would move that we, we recommend approval of the site plan, condition pod satisfying all the comments in the December 14th, December 14th, handover engineering process. All second, all in favor?
Aye.
There you go. All right. And then the, what's the second motion?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can make a motion to recommend approval. You can make a motion to recommend denial or you could just say, leave it up to council if you don't want.
I'll, I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of the conditional use.
Do we have a second for that?
One second.
Any, any discussion? The only I would like to add is that, that we just focus on the landscaping part of that, that they address that and that the stormwater book gets addressed. And I assume that takes into account even areas of the site that may have been paved that otherwise weren't accounted for in private stormwater management.
Yeah, I, I would think that you could, if you're going to recommend approval, you could do a conditional on the December 14th letter.
Okay.
As there are conditional use aspects in the letter.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd make a, or a motion for a conditional use approval based on, on the December 14th, the conditions on the December 14th, 2023, handover regalia, but you met. Dog circuit.
All right. Seven, a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, well, we had these people that. We have a little one minute. So next item is approval of November 16th minutes.
And we have a motion for approval of those minutes?
No.
Notion for a second? A second, all in favor?
Aye.
And then?
All right, done.
Then we had Kathy, is it Kathy McCallister?
Yes.
I'm Kathy McCallister and I reside at 2339 Black River Road and I've been there for almost 30 years. So I feel that I would be most affected by the recently revealed fire plain townhome proposal and would therefore like my concerns on public record. That was listed on the Salkin Source on October 28th of this year. So my home has been occupied by four other families since 1860s. The, there's a lot of wildlife. The land has red-tailed hawks, deer, owls and foxes. What is the benefit to lower Salkin to destroy this, this pristine area? There is a 5.31 acre riverine wetland that originates on this property and runs through my yard and connects to the Black River as defined by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. This, according to the P A D E P, the riverine wetlands are all wetlands and deep water habitats within a channel. The channels can be naturally or artificially created and contain moving water or connecting two bodies of standing water. Riverine wetlands include rivers, streams, creeks, quirks, rivulets, canals, canals, sorry, channels and tributaries. So this destruction of this wetland and the surrounding trees make us really poor stewards of the land and make this area less attractive for its residents. Given the riverine overflows its banks now in heavy rain, which I have witnessed many, many times, I heard that there may be catastrophic damage to my land, which is four plus acres, and structures from the runoff created by the unproposed development. That's what I just want to say.
Fine.
Yeah, just so you know, there was a sketch plan submitted and they withdrew and we haven't seen, we haven't seen perfect upsets.
William Warner?
All right.
Dustin?
Okay. There's no, no business? And motion for adjournment?
Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and motion for adjournment.
There we go. Yeah, Merry Christmas, everybody. See you up here. Thank you.
Oh, yes.
My call when he started, I knew you were.